Meeting to order, today's work sessions focused on career and college readiness. Voice and words, thank you.
Good afternoon, thank you for having our team here today, and we do have a team that will help provide some background on the college and career readiness in the Sioux Falls School District, we have Josh Hall, Principal at CTE, Kristin Grunager, High School Curriculum Coordinator, and Renee Oinas, our new K-12 Career Counselor, I was going to say Career Readiness Counselor, so. So each one of us have a section in this report, and so we will share this information, feel free to stop us at any time if you have questions, and we'll leave a time at the end for questions also. So, the Career and College Readiness is part of the district priorities under Academic Success, and it involves three major skill areas, core academics, transfer of skills to the workplace, and employability skills, which include critical thinking and responsibility, and so how do we take that experience that they have in the classroom and apply it to the workplace and really get them prepared for that next step? So today's outcomes, we're going to share our career pathways and what that looks like on the district website, and the hard work that has been done to clearly align that and make it more visible for families. We're going to share our expanded opportunities for next year, and when we were going through this, I said to Kristin, it's like, oh my gosh, when you look at all the new opportunities we have for students, great things. And then our AP and Dual Credit, we have some new opportunities, and some new partners, and what that enrollment looks like in those two programs. Josh will share the industry credentials and internships. Josh and Renee will talk through that in the K-12 Career Counselor, Renee will share her expertise, and then we'll talk a little bit about the college and career counseling curriculum. And I'll turn it over to Kristin.
So the state of South Dakota has 16 career clusters, and I'm happy to say that we have defined pathways in all of those career clusters, particularly in 15 of them. We're maybe still a little weak in the law enforcement one with really direct classes, but everything else, I think we have some well-laid out courses that help students who are interested in pursuing a career in those areas, a great pathway set up for them. So on the school district website, when you go to curriculum and then high school, on the right side, there's a list of different buttons that you can click on, things like Dual Credit, and AP, and other things that we're going to talk about, and one of those is career pathways. And so, this is an example of one. This is the Arts and Technology and Communications, and so at the very top of it, it lists some possible careers. It certainly doesn't list all of the careers, but there are quite a few options. And one of the reasons we do that is because students don't always think about all the different choices that might be related in this area. And then we broke it down, and looked at courses that kids could take anytime during their high school career, in ninth through 12th grade, courses that they have to be at least a sophomore to take, and then those that they have to be a junior or senior to take. And then, at the bottom of each one, we also put a little note that said, there are often opportunities for dual credit, but there's, again, no way to list all of those opportunities with all the institutions that we have. Information Technology, STEM is on there, Biotechnology, Research and Development, healthcare of course is a big one, and that's another great place for students to see a wider variety of options.
We have one, you developed one for each area.
Yes, yes, and when we put this together, the agricultural classes that we're adding for next year are not in this, but Megan is getting ready to put those online so students can see those as well. So we will add those in the agricultural section of the pathways. And then I'll talk about some of our new opportunities for next school year. One of the exciting things is that we're expanding Sign Language, to add Sign Language III and IV. One thing that surprised me when I started this job is, when I saw Sign Language I and II, I thought that was like Spanish I and II, and so you took Sign Language I for a year, and Sign Language II for a year, and you got your World Language credit, but that's not the way Sign Language is set up. So students who took Sign Language I was a semester, and Sign Language II was a semester, and so that didn't fulfill the World Language II credits that are needed by many institutions. And so this will give students who are really interested in that area, the opportunity to earn the World Language credit they need to go on, and the numbers have exploded for Sign Language, which is exciting to see. Courses are offered at Washington High School, and Lincoln and Jefferson this year, and Roosevelt traditionally have had maybe six students that want to take Sign Language. I believe Lincoln has 30-some, and Roosevelt and Jefferson each have 16, and Washington is almost 140 students, so a lot of interest, so that's exciting to see. We're adding Aviation III at CTE, we've had Aviation I and II, so that takes students a step closer. That group of students went up to, thank you, I get my North Dakota schools confused, I knew Teresa would know, UND last week, they took a field trip, they left at like 4:30 in the morning, but went up and visited that program. So some really great connections with UND, and also with SDSU with their program as well. Agricultural education, we're adding classes associated with FFA next year, which we're really excited about. I have a new clerical who just started this week, and this morning I said, can you throw something together, so counselors have something for FFA? And so, we'll give this to counselors this week, but First Block at CTE will be offering Natural Resources, Small Animal Science, and Egg Leadership, and then in the spring semester, we'll offer Horticulture and Landscaping, Large Animal Science, and Agricultural Biotechnology. So, super exciting, and I know we already have some student interest out there in those courses. Washington piloted Basics of the Human Body, which has taken off like gangbusters there, and will expand to Jefferson and Roosevelt next year, and Lincoln the following year when we finish our science study. Through our science study, we've been talking about what kind of opportunities can we provide for students, and so Jefferson is also going to pilot Forensics next year, and they have almost 170 students who signed up for Forensics next year. So, again, students are excited to have some different opportunities in areas. Guitar will be offered next year for the first time, which is a great opportunity in our Fine Arts curriculum, and then we have a couple of additions to our AP course list. European History will be offered at Washington High School, and Spanish Literature and Culture will be offered at Lincoln High School. So that brings us up to 34 AP course offerings, which is phenomenal. And then Dual Credit, we're expanding speech, so all of the high schools will have Dual Credit speech, three of them through SDSU, and then Jefferson runs theirs through NSU. And then next year, Jefferson will also offer Dual Credit Speech in Person in the Building. So these are courses that are taught by our teachers' cooperation with the universities. Certainly students can still take those courses online, Dual Credit as well. And then, we've expanded our concurrent credit opportunities with Southeast Technical College. Carpentry and Welding were added this year, Josh may want to talk more about that. And then, we tried something different this year, this spring, we offered Math 100 and English 100 for students to take right at CTE with a Southeast Tech instructor, and the reason we did that is because Southeast has informed us that they have students who come, maybe they're really interested in something like welding, they take all of the welding classes, but they don't take those Gen Ed classes that they need, and so they don't officially graduate from Southeast. And so, we thought we'd try this, because it gives students an opportunity to fulfill a graduation requirement and take care of that general education requirement at Southeast. So, we had a few students try it this spring, and we hope that those numbers will continue to grow next year. And then finally, JAG, which is Jobs for Americans Graduates, not the Air Force like I thought initially. Roosevelt piloted that program this year, and all four schools will offer that next year, and it's a great program to develop leadership skills among our students, so it'll be exciting to have that as an opportunity everywhere. One of the interesting things I find about JAG is that the teacher who runs those courses follows students for 18 months after they graduate, so it really gives us an opportunity to see how that class impacted students' lives going into the future. So, as I mentioned, as of next year, we'll have 34 AP courses, with the addition of AP European History and AP Government. Last school year, we had just over 1,300 students take 2,400, just over 2,400 tests, and we started AP testing now this week, and so we'll get those results in July, and look for our students to do well again. We have a very strong AP program in the Sioux Falls School District. And then we have some great partner programs. We have the Avera Academy, students apply to be in the Avera program, they take 25 students each year, and those students attend courses at Southeast Technical College in the mornings, and then attend their homeschool attendance centers in the afternoon. They will be heading graduation next Friday, I can give you details in case any of you want to join that celebration. One of the neat things about this program is that on Friday mornings, the students visit different departments in the hospital, and so it's everything from HVAC and food service to labs, they've even had opportunities to observe surgeries, I mean, they see the whole gamut, and one of the things that Avera really wants students to understand, is that there's such a wide variety of careers available in the hospitals, and so you don't have to be thinking doctor or nurse to be in the Avera Academy, they want all types of students. It is an application process, and there's a committee that reviews those applications and then selects 25 students. It's really geared towards students who are first generation, or BL, or have a socioeconomic challenge, or a life challenge, but it's also open to all students. And then Sanford also has a program with us called Classrooms to Careers, and that's housed out of Washington High School. They had 29 students in the fall, and 16 this spring, and are set for 25 next fall again. Instead of traveling to Southeast Tech to take courses, the instructor comes to Washington and leads the courses there, and they, students take Student Success, the English course, and a math course typically are the courses that they offer in the fall. They had students earn 237 credits, or they're on target, we're not quite done, but pretty close for Southeast Tech, so 237 credits this year, which is exciting. Of the 45 students who were in the Classrooms to Careers at Washington this year, 39 have applied and are planning to attend a post-secondary institution, so that's exciting. In the Avera program, they are running about a 67% of the students in that program who are going on to a post-secondary institution immediately following high school. And then Dual Enrollment, so, in order to, for students to participate in dual enrollment classes, they have to meet certain criteria, being juniors or seniors, being the first one. We're lucky in that we have some courses that students can take right in our buildings, and those would be College Algebra and the Speech and Government Opportunities. Our Dual Enrollment numbers continue to climb, so you can see in the 2018-19 school year, we had 99 students, and this year we have 403 students in dual enrollment courses. So that continues to be another exciting opportunity for students in our buildings. And I'll turn it over to Josh.
Good afternoon. So we talk about concurrent enrollment at the CTE Academy, and that's something that we continually look to expand. Kristin mentioned the English 100 and Math 100 courses that we're offering here this spring at the CTE Academy as part of First Block. So students attend Monday, Wednesday for one of the courses, and then Tuesday, Thursday for the opposite course, and then have Friday as a time to connect with that instructor for extra help or work on things that are needed. We look to grow that next year, we're going to offer it again in the spring, actually during the same block time in the spring semester. Welding and Carpentry are courses that we put in place this year, those are concurrent offerings that are aligned to the courses that we already teach, and so, we went through the process with Southeast Technical College to make sure that we were covering all the necessary information and assessing kids in a way that aligned with what they were doing, so that students have the opportunity to earn credits as part of their construction management program or their construction certificate. And welding also, same thing, our classes go towards their welding certification and degree. The Academy of Finance, that's been in place for a while, so students actually have opportunities to take courses through both Southeast Tech, and then you'll see down the list a little bit farther, as well as the University of South Dakota and the School of Business. And then Computer Science, again, we have alignment with both Southeast Technical College and Dakota State. We listed, you know, those courses and course numbers, and their alignment, so really it's about a student deciding what their pathway is and the best fit for them, as far as determining a Southeast Technical College credit, or credit at USD or Dakota State is the best fit for them. And of course, that's at a much reduced rate, they take Dual Credit, it's around $50 a credit card. Internships and Career Exploration, so we talk about internship opportunities, and we're talking about all opportunities where students get out in the workplace, you know, so the 1,767 number includes a variety of opportunities at the home buildings and at the alternative school at Axtel Park that students work through, but it's getting them out in the workplace and giving them credit for those experiences. 139 students at CTE, now those experiences are tied more to a specific industry in which they've taken coursework, and so they're better prepared, I think about things like welding, the CNA experience in relation to our healthcare department, and so that's through the CTE Academy. And then Career Exploration, so the CTE mini-courses were part of the study when we looked at the programs at Axtel Park, and trying to figure out how we can give some of those students more CTE opportunities, you know, did it make sense to add on at Axtel or modify the building, you know, that's a very expensive thing to do. And so, the committee came up with a plan to utilize the current CTE Academy facility and bring kids out during an off time of the day to utilize the equipment instructors that we already had in place. And so students were able to take 10-day mini-courses in a variety of our areas with our instructors, and combine several of those courses together to earn an introductory half-credit in CTE exploration, and then ideally, it would lead to, you know, full classes out at the CTE Academy, which it did for several students, and we'll continue that again next year.
And I want to commend, I was able to go to Axtel and visit some of the students and instructors there, and they just said their attendance on those days that they had the mini-courses was improved, because they were very excited to go and have that exploration out there, so, great partnership with them to do that, so thank you.
Yeah, they seem to be having a lot of fun, you know, anytime we can get kids learning by doing, right, it's a plus and it's a win for everyone involved, and so they get to come out and work with the latest and greatest equipment with some highly trained instructors, and get to do things, and, you know, we're really just trying to find that passion, you know, what are they into, how can we create a better hook in education and give them more meaning? And so, we're able to do that through those mini-courses, and like I said, a number of students have then come back once they have identified that interest area and taken a full course in that area with us. The middle school summer camps at the CTE Academy, this is something that we started a few years ago, in trying to generate more exposure and more interest level for middle school students, to raise awareness of the opportunities that they have in the Sioux Falls School District, and coming out to the CTE Academy at the high school level. We continue to expand those every year, and then add to our business partnerships. It's kind of hard to see, that's the actual flyer that we put out, but you can see some of those logos at the bottom of that flyer, and those are all business partners that make $20 per camp possible, you know, through their contributions. Those of you that have had kids go through summer camps, you know how costly those can be, and $20 is a great opportunity, and really, it's not even about that, that's more just a commitment level, right? And so, getting kids out for those camps that exposes them to the CTE Academy, and then talking about opportunities that are available to them as they continue on to high school, it's been a really good thing for us. And then for three of those four camps, students actually spend time up on the Southeast Technical College campus, and so we do it in partnership with them, which has also been a great experience for us. So, students are able to go online, or parents are able to go online and register for those camps, and take care of the payment and all that process, and they're actually filling out very fast. In fact, we've expanded the culinary camp and added another section to that, because it filled up so fast, so, those are great opportunities, and something we'll look to expand on in future summers. It's fun to see those middle school students in the building, and staying busy, and just excited again about being involved in CTE education. Industry Credentials, this is another one of our goals at the district level, is to increase the number of industry credentials earned by our students. So, the NCRC test is taken by all of our students as they go through high school, and you can see the number of students who earn certificates in that, 1,149. It's also a component students who earn certificates in that, 1,149. It's also a component of our district report card. And so something that, that we're measured on at the state level. We look at some of these other industry credentials. These are done through the CTE Academy. We're actually in the process right now of doing the CNA testing for this, this year's group of students. It's fun to see them excited, nervous, all those things. It's really kind of their first chance at a, you know, a state level test where our instructors kind of take a step back outside of the preparation piece and let AVARA, in this case, work with, with the students to earn that certification. So that's considered an industry credential along with several others that you see there. And then the National Academy of Finance certification, we actually filled out a petition with the state to get that added as an approved credential, and it will be starting next year. So we have another, a number of students in our Academy of Finance who do earn that certification, and it will be one of those recognized credentials. Those credentials get noted then on their diploma as part of their transcribed record. And so I guess kind of a star next to their name, if you will, as far as our official record for those students. All right, K-12 Career Counselor.
I was just going to comment on the CNA piece, and I think that that's such a, a great thing that we offer. You know, we have lots of healthcare needs in our community, and so this gives students the opportunity to either volunteer or get a paid position as well, and whether it's our senior living or some of the hospitals and things like that. When I went to school to be a nurse, it wasn't required, but I think that many nursing programs now require that before you can even apply, you have to have that. And so by help, by us helping those students take care of that early on, I think it just sets them up to have one less obstacle or one less barrier to be able to apply and jump, jump through another hoop to get through that. So I love seeing that and knowing that, you know, our students are taking advantage of that and whether it's for a nursing program or something else that they're going on, it's very, very helpful. So I'm glad that we can offer that to them too.
It's certainly a way that we could put them ahead of their peers, you know, like when we talked with Southeast Technical College, and we debated on, is this an appropriate, you know, dual or concurrent credit opportunity? And it's really the certification is what's important. And so we're doing that. We're doing that through the same process that students who attend there and those applicable programs have to go through. And so we're giving them a step ahead of their peers by doing that at the high school level.
Awesome. Thank you.
So I come before you today as the new K-12 Career Counselor for 2223. And if you've been around Sioux Falls for a while, this actually was a position that existed a while ago and bring it back as a 2.0. So the main focus will be to help students K through 12 really have a progression of career development as they go through our programming. And so working with the elementary counselors and staff, middle school counselors and staff, and the high school counselors and staff to be providing those appropriate opportunities for students to develop soft skills, have work-based learning opportunities, exposures to industry, and those will all be components of my job, which is great. But really to just help coordinate that district-wide too, so that what's happening at one elementary school can also be carried over to another. And finding appropriate partners that we can call upon to help our variety of schools get that exposure without overtaxing any of our partners too. And then also, just to help implement the new curriculum that the counseling team has worked on this year, and that will be a big task of this position, at least initially, is just to implement all of the career development opportunities that resulted from that curriculum. Most of that is Tier 1, meaning for all of our students, but then also developing what those Tier 2 opportunities should be and offerings for students that maybe want to take something a little bit further. So that is where we plan to start, at least with this position. There's lots of directions that it could go and ways to help our school district and our staff. But specifically, we'll start with the counseling staff to support them and better utilize all of the resources and the programming we have in the school district. Thank you.
Those are our K-12 programming, but we'd be remiss if we didn't talk about Community Campus because it's, the career readiness doesn't quit when they get to 18 or beyond, 18 to 21. So Community Campus serves our students with disabilities. And Nikki Whiting shared some information previously this year, but at Community Campus, they really do work on those employability skills and helping with job placements. So they have different tiered levels. They have that volunteer, non-paid vocational skills training that happens on campus. They have paid training within the building to help support those vocational and transitional work experiences to get them ready to go out to a paid employment opportunity. And then ultimately, that competitive employment. So they are competing for a job, applying, interviewing, and getting hired. They help with those transfer skills to the workplace. They have what they call Job Club to help support students with those soft skills. And we have lots of opportunities to work with soft skills in Classroom to Careers, AVARA at Academy. So at all levels, continue to develop that out into the workplace. And then Project Search is a partnership with Del Romo, and that's that transition to work. And that's a national program through the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation aimed towards students committed to reaching those goals of competitive employment, up to 16 hours or more per week by the end of the program. And they, they participate in three internship rotations throughout that work site, and you can see those listed dietary, restaurant, chef housekeeping activities, memory care. And so again, giving them a variety of work experiences or someone onsite to help supervise, help support, and coach along the way to, you know, that in, right in the moment coaching to provide that support for students. And so that's our 18 to 21-year program. That's our information today. We just appreciate the opportunity to share what is happening in the Sioux Falls School District with career readiness and the new opportunities that we'll provide next year. But we stand by for any questions. The whole team's here. So any questions that you might have?
I think it would be fabulous, you know, that, in the website, how you develop those different career paths, like specifically targeted to maybe our high school and middle school parents to show how that works, you know, and I think it would be really informative to them to look at that because they can see what they can do within the discipline.
And those career pathways out there for students, but then yes, and parents. And then now with a K-12 Career Counselor, how do we help those opportunities and those pathways? And that's part of our work this, this summer and into next year. As we develop any courses in middle school, how do they feed into those career pathways into high school? And so really taking time to look at encore and different opportunities for middle school and how does that feed into that? So yes.
And with the Ag, as a 10-year CH member, I just think it's awesome that we've added some Ag programs. You know, we think of Sioux Falls as being urban and not Ag-related, but yet everything that, the tax dollars, everything in our community does circulate around Ag. So it's great that we're offering opportunities to our students now.
And our new Ag teacher will help develop those partnerships within the community. But when you think about, like you said, everything around us is Ag-related, and we have many partners within the Sioux Falls area that support that Ag that we can partner with for urban Ag for students. And seed to table, you know, we think about that out at the CTE Academy, how can we grow? And then use it in our culinary program to support that whole process. Good stuff.
I just want to add a couple of things. One is, I think you can see how complimentary this fits with our other new position with our partnerships and after-school programs and how this has tentacles as we all think about how all of this works together, and it's all about creating opportunities for students. The other thing that I think is really important to point out is that there are many things within this report that we can point to that our students told us directly. They had an interest and needed an easier path to dual credit. We still work on that with our higher ed partners. That's not always an easy path to navigate, as some of you know as parents. The other opportunities for student interest, Ag is one that I had a great conversation with a student earlier this year out at Jefferson, and I know he is super excited. But along with that, other opportunities, expanding healthcare, just paying attention to what our students are telling us that they're most interested in, and then doing what we can to add things that bear credit or that are a precursor to something that they may choose in high school at that middle level. So our, our students give us great information, and we just had another session with them recently with many of us in that same room. And we always glean something from them as they do at our buildings as well. So they're an important part of particularly this area because they're the future employees, and they're the, the choosers of their paths here over the next few years. So it's exciting to see those things come to light after we've heard it directly from our kids.
And I noticed when Kristin was reporting Computer Science, there's additional things. We didn't really delve into that, but with the partnership in what DSU is building here, there's so many abilities with that for us to provide opportunities for our students as well.
And we had the Computer Science Board report not long ago, the curriculum adoption. But again, computer, continuing to bring a team together with industry partners, students, and staff to say, what does that look like? Much like what Kristin's team has done with science, with forensics and basics of the human body, high student interest. So how do we reprogram some of our computer science courses that meet the demand that might be out there in the future? And it was just a good feature on DSU in the last couple of days about some of their, their work that they're doing to help support the dark web, if you would, you know? But that's a need. People, we have it out there all the time.
I think, I mean, I, this stuff is really exciting, and I think it's, it's really good. And we all here mostly, I think, understand it, and we want to get as many people involved. And so my question is, is how can we get this down to like the 100-foot level with our students? I'm thinking about, you know, I have two, I have two kids. One of them is like I've known since kindergarten what I want to do with my life, and one of kid is, I have no idea. And then I have no idea as a freshman. And so as a parent, I'm trying to decide, how do I help her to explore different things? And so I think I probably am a lot more educated on what we have to offer just by the role I'm in here, but how can we help those freshmen and sophomore who, we know, we get the calls from Josh saying, come out to CTE, and what if that doesn't work for me or my parents won't take me? Like how, and so I'm just thinking within our schools, like is there something we could do during, at Lincoln, I know it's win time, like is there something we could do? Like, we're going to have an after-school, come and do an interest survey. Once you take an interest survey, we're going to look at these 16 pathways and introduce them to the website where they can go and explore. I just, I would love to see how we can get that down to the level of the students because I think whether we like it or not, a lot of our students are really independently working on this. They, their parents may not understand, they don't have the time, they didn't go to college, or they didn't go to an advanced, you know, or anything beyond high school. And so how can we give them some tools? And maybe that has to happen in our buildings for students to be able to go with their peers and say, hey, let's go learn about this today after school. And I see you're lining up, so I'm excited to see that maybe you have some ideas. But I think we haven't had maybe the resources that we needed before. And so I would love to just hear, and I don't expect you to have all the answers, but how can we take this awesome information and bring it down so that our students have access to it?
We did have, we did have a job shadow program, what, three years ago it went away? And that was funded through or Sioux Falls. And they replaced it with the Career Connections. But we had over 300, 400 kids per semester in each building out there doing job shadows because then they had some career exposure on a short amount of time. So we're really pushing hard to get that back in. But again, it takes community partners, it takes somebody to organize that.
Yep.
But then the counselors help support some of that career exploration too, Mount and Renee.
And I think that will be part of the goal of the K-12 counselor role. And, you know, I don't want to say that having one counselor in that role is going to be the solution to all of these questions because there is a lot of work to do there for sure. And we have really robust opportunities in Sioux Falls. Part of the challenge is communicating it in a way that it makes sense to our students, to our parents, even to our own staff, because there's a lot of opportunity and it's hard to keep track of it eventually. So developing systems and ways to help students understand it and part of that progression, K-12, getting them to be excited about a career or just careers by the time they're finished with elementary and have all of them be that way by the time they get to middle school where they can really start to have some building blocks to careers so that when they get to our high school curriculum, they can make the best of the opportunities that they have, that it really is going to propel them into their post-secondary opportunities. So part of that is just being able to have that whole scope and a way to communicate how that should look for our students and be able to help parents to follow that guide and help their own student. Because right now, we, we have pockets of that and things that are happening for sure, like every student takes a career assessment. And I don't even know necessarily if all of our parents know that that happens, right? And some of that is on them, but a lot of that's on us too, to be able to communicate that better to the parents so that they can help their own student to have that path. Parents are still the number one impact on a student's post-secondary choice, no matter what else is happening in their life. So helping our parents to truly understand it is going to be the biggest piece of that, I think.
Say too, we have a new website now, which is a foundational piece to so many things. And so I know that Teresa's team has also looked at what's the ease of clicking on a pathway, seeing it, and then seeing all the things that can kind of then be built on that, which I think gets a little bit also to what you're thinking about is how easy is it to go in and find out about things? And then where can that take you? And we've also talked about how then can we connect to our business and industry partners in Sioux Falls so that I can see, right here in Sioux Falls, if I follow this pathway, here's what awaits me in this community for employment? And then do we have a preview of that somehow? So that's kind of a work in progress. We've looked at a number of different similar web examples of that and something that we kind of hope to build out over time.
It would, would be neat is, I, I unfortunately did know my son had taken the career assessment only because he told me that he qualified to be a deep sea or deep water welder. But, and, and I know that they can then go to, what's the South Dakota website and they there's another. Thank you, that one, which I actually did go to within once. But I think it'd be nice if, once they take those tests, kind of like with our Smarter Balance, if we could integrate all of that into our Infinite Campus or whatever platform we end up using for grades and all that, so that a parent has kind of one spot they can go, okay, at eighth grade when they took, or whatever grade that was, they took that assessment, they can click on that link, even if it's just a direct link to that site or the Smarter Balance scores too, because it's just, it, it becomes, you know, it's like luckily I saved my son's sheet that was mailed to him on Smarter Balance because it was a scholarship. You know, he didn't have to pay to apply to USD. He didn't even have to take the ACT. But it's like, who keeps all of that stuff and keeps it organized? And then you multiply that by how many kids you have, it becomes problematic. So if we can make that simpler for parents, it'd be great.
And his eighth grade, is that too late to take a career assessment? Like, should we be doing something earlier and then again in eighth grade and looking at the differences of that? Or, you know, I used to tell my kids when they were in elementary and middle school, the job that you have in the future probably doesn't even exist right now, you know? And I think that's still true. And so they might have this generalized interest but not really know what that could lead into. And I think that's okay because they're still going to think medical or science, or they're going to think math or finance or whatever, you know what I mean? So I, but I, but having them take an assessment in eighth grade, I'm not sure if that's the end-all, be-all. Like, what do we do then in ninth or 10th grade when we're still, I love these and I'm going to go home and sit down and look at these because I think they're super helpful. And I love that they have classes associated with them because then you're not having to look at this and then run over and go look at the guide, you know, to see what is available. It's all, so I think that this is a huge improvement, and I'm really excited about this. I think it's just a matter of how do we get them thinking about which one of these 16 do I start with? And I think a lot of kids, they could cross some out right away, and they're like, oh, that's not for me. But then is there something that says based on your inherent skills or your likes or your personality, this is what fits you best? And I don't think parents can necessarily pick that out, but maybe there is some sort of an assessment, an interest survey or something that could help to identify those things that might then gear them. So I'm excited about all this stuff. It's real, it's great. And I think It's real, it's great, and I think it'll really help people if we can get it in their hands and in front of them. So I look forward to the, the new role and then all of the kind of PR stuff that we have that comes out around it too, just to get people, um, interested and engaging in it, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And we had no one sign up for public input, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Gose and sign. We are adjourned until four o'clock for Southeast time.